Yeah.
So, there's this, this is, oh wait, James, this is, you can read this ground area, and then there's a hallway there, and then there's a ticket. What we may have is, is kind of like being open, just so folks can know, you know, you can call, call. Call, exactly. You get into our creek, which is now, circles, circles, we get to those people. You gotta stay in the channel, I've got the M D bar cover show, if you try and shortcut the turn signal out, you come into a great big brown hole. And then they're, they didn't come from, they didn't come from. So, even the ships that used to come up right there, and then it was about. And then there's, well, if you do that channel, it shuts the bottom of the house. Yeah. Right. Just two guys will go up there, looking, and then they put the conversation, and then that's the last one. That's the biggest, the highest. I like how they do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Basically, people. Yeah.
Right.
So, we're not the only one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Much better than.
Horrible.
So, could. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
You know, that's true, too.
Yeah. That's it?
Hmm.
Oh.
That's all, yeah. Hmm. You're with. Hmm. Let's see. Yeah. Did it, the car? Those were any good. Can I do whatever? Yeah. I think he had it. So, it's. No. It's. Close, right? Move, so. Hmm. You would relieve, okay, we done for the week, this weekend.
Yeah.
Hi. No, I don't, no, he's a baby or?
No, him.
He's just a baby.
Yeah, yeah. That's a girl.
Oh.
Sorry, girl.
He's got a rabbit. He's gonna say it anyway.
Well, she's gonna be more. That's right. I'm holding your, they're pushing. That's it. I hope they use it. I think Mr. Hathaway's, the rest are moving open. Hey, I heard the towel thing go off.
Really watch your game, that's great enough.
DM on tonight.
So. I'll start over. You never mentioned it.
Come on, now, all.
You have, you have all his answers, and then he's coming to. More simple, just ask him if he's hanging.
Don't you dare.
I didn't say a word. I think that clock is up, too. Shocker. It's always low. Well, he's first on the agenda, so we gotta wait for a minute.
Yeah. He'll probably come around then.
I'll call the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We'll first have a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
For which is. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Townsend?
Here.
Ms. Butler?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Thomas? Mr. LaBreschel? Dr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Rose?
Here.
Okay, we have a court.
Thank you. We'll move on to the minutes from the November twenty-first meeting. Are there any comments, corrections?
Madam Chair, I do have one correction. Uh, page four, under, uh, number ten, Chairwoman's Report, second paragraph. One, two, three, four, fifth line, uh, minimum of three more informational meetings, uh, strike more, it was three informational meetings. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other additions, corrections? May I have a motion?
I'm going to approve the minutes with the one correction that Mr. Davis noted.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. May I have a roll call, please?
Sure.
Mr. Moyer?
Abstain.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Abstain.
Ms. Townsend?
Well, abstain, no, it's absent, absent that night.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the. We'll move on to the citizen comment period.
We're gonna hold off until your item's up, so you don't need to sign up, but we'll let you speak when you get to the agenda.
Okay.
They're here for the, um, making.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you, Kelly. Uh, so we'll move on to Mr. Hathaway's presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board, oh, not board, Planning Commission. Um, you'll notice in your packets that were handed out, there's a really small spreadsheet that I'm gonna focus on. And I have bigger copies, so I'm gonna, yes, and we'll also email the spreadsheet to you as well. Because even this is, it's a little tough to read, so.
Good thing I didn't bring the whole Facebook stuff. Okay, yeah.
All right, um, what you have before you is the FY twenty twenty-four Comprehensive Improvement Plan. You'll notice a big difference, uh, than last year's plan. Last year's plan totaled about four and a half million dollars. Um, the plan that you have before you this afternoon totals sixteen mil- million. Sixteen million, five hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. And of course, there is an explanation, uh, for that and, and, and the big increase in the capital improvements program. Uh, first of all, why are we here today? We're here because the Code of Virginia, uh, requires the Planning Commission to review the locality's annual comprehensive plan. Um, and really, the Code of Virginia requires that you review and make recommendations to the board on those capital program items that involve land use. Um, but it's been our custom to just give you the entire plan. I think it helps, I, it, it helps understand the entire plan other than just seeing bits and portions of it. Uh, we're asking that you consider the entire capital improvement program. In the past, um, we have been receiving, since Colonial Downs opened, uh, we've been receiving revenues, uh, from the gambling activities at Colonial Downs. Um, our Board of Supervisors have made the decision that those revenues will not go to operating expenses. Uh, they will only go towards capital expenditures. In previous years, we've been setting aside Colonial Downs revenue, uh, for the expansion of broadband to every single home and every single business in the county. Uh, we have enough money set aside for our broadband contract with Cox. Um, that is progressing well. In fact, um, from our last meeting with Cox, uh, we should see actual construction activity in February. Right now, Cox is finalizing their engineering plans, their right-of-way acquisitions, and the permits, uh, that they need as, as, as well. So, that mu- that project is moving on schedule. Now that we've set aside the funding that was needed for broadband, which was our primary, um, capital focus, um, we now have this revenue from Colonial Downs to take care of other capital needs i- in, in the county. Um, and actually pay cash for them, so we don't have to borrow funds for things we would normally borrow for, such as, uh, construction of a new fire station. Um, infrastructure improvements at Pinefort Park, um, things that are included in today's capital, uh, improvement plan, that I'll go before bri- go before you briefly. Um, this spreadsheet should look familiar to you, it's broken by departments. I'm gonna focus on the spreadsheets, but you have all the background data in your folders. In your folders, you have the actual request, uh, that I reviewed and that I received from each department, um, in requesting capital projects. And always, if you have any questions about any of them, please feel free to contact me. Uh, no action is being requested today, this is just a presentation. Um, if the Planning Commission feels comfortable, uh, with moving forward in January, we can conduct a public hearing then, um, and then take action. Uh, looking at the spreadsheet, starting with the first column, which is information technology, the only project that is proposed for next fiscal year is, uh, the replacement of our, um, servers, uh, for the county. Our servers are on a replacement schedule, the replacement schedule is based on the length of time that we can get warranty on them. Um, and we do have a couple of servers that are coming up for replacement on our normal replacement schedule. Uh, that cost being eighty thousand dollars. Moving to the next is Parks and Recreation. Uh, the first item, Pinefort Park, this is normally a project that we would probably consider, um, doing in one phase. We have it broken out in two phases, and we would probably consider borrowing, uh, for this as, as well. It is a significant amount of money in total, a little over two million dollars. Um, but we're proposing to cash fund this, and this is the installation of lights at Pinefort Park. Um, first phase will consist of lighting a portion of the parking lot and lighting the baseball fields in concession area. Second phase, uh, which would be FY twenty-five, would involve lighting the soccer fields, football fields, and the remainder of the parking lot. The next item proposed for funding is Quinton Park Parking Lot Improvements. Um, that area, well, our department requested one hundred and twenty-four thousand, I've recommended seventy-five thousand for that. Um, as opposed to doing asphalt, we're going to keep it in gravel, um, but there are some other improvements that are needed, such as the replacement of the ballards in the parking lot, um, and also some lighting improvements, um, associated with that. Uh, we also have the Historic School Concession Stand, um, well, actually, I did not recommend funding for that because, um, it's our hope that eventually, um, the Football Association will eventually move to Pinefort Park. So, I'm not recommending that we put money into renovating the concession stand at the Historic School. Um, and that's it for Parks and Recreation. The next item is our school board. Uh, we have a total of approximately one point nine million dollars in projects from our school. Uh, the biggest project being the replacement of school buses. Um, I think when I first started working with the county, uh, school bus costs, I believe it was about eighty thousand dollars. Uh, today, a school bus costs almost a hundred and forty thousand dollars just for one. Our school buses are on a fifteen-year replacement schedule, that is the recommendation of the Department of Education and, um, the schedule that, that we try to follow. So, we have five school buses at a approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, scheduled for replacement next fiscal year. Uh, there is a significant portion of the high school roof, um, that is in need of, uh, replacement, and that is scheduled, um, projected at four hundred and five thousand dollars to replace. School vehicles. We used to, and this is an item that you would normally not see, school vehicles. Um, with our sheriff's vehicles, when they reach their life expectancy with our sheriff's department, we would transfer them to the schools, and the schools would utilize them. Well, our sheriffs have moved to SUVs, and for some reason, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but it is a school Department of Education policy. I've been told that, um, they cannot transport students in SUVs. Uh, so therefore, we're having to purchase, uh, vehicles to, to replace our existing fleet. Um, I think this is probably a very outdated, uh, requirement, back when SUVs were known for being a little top-heavy and would flip over, but today's SUVs are just like big cars. But, um, that, that is a requirement, and that's why we are proposing to purchase, um, school vehicles. We also have, uh, district-wide paving for all of our school facilities, um, the repaving of the parking lot surfaces and drive aisles, uh, Chromebook digital conversion. Um, one hundred thousand dollars is proposed for that, that is for the Chromebooks that all of our, uh, middle school and high school students have. Actually, the total cost is about three hundred thousand dollars, and we started out paying for this out of our capital line item. What I've tried to do is really get this to our operating line item because it is an ongoing expenditure. Um, so each year, I've reduced it by about a hundred thousand dollars to eventually, nothing will come out of our capital, and it will all come out of our operating. District-wide roof maintenance, uh, we have a lot of flat roofs, uh, in our school buildings, and, um, they're regularly in need of, of repair. And district-wide miscellaneous improvements, uh, the majority of this line item goes to painting during the summer, uh, when the schools are, are out of the facility, getting the schools ready for, uh, the next school year. And that is it for the school request for the Sheriff's Office. The upgrade of our radio communication system, um, I believe that system is about eight years old now. Um, and there's a lot of software involved within this radio communication system, um, and really, it's just a big computer. Um, and every year, it seems like every year, there are upgrades to the software, and we're at a point now where we need to upgrade, uh, the software for our radio communication system. Um, that does come at a significant cost of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In fact, um, we've just partnered with Charles City County. Actually, they are operating off of our computers, our, our radio system, um, and they've had to install infrastructure in Charles City, and actually, they have more current infrastructure than we do because they have the most recent versions, which does create some communication, um, problems, um, between the two localities. Uh, the next item that I've recommended for, uh, funding is the Symphony Consoles. Um, these are the workstations in our dispatch, dispatch station. Um, it's basically the computer system that goes with our radio communication system. Uh, we're looking at adding another, um, station in our dispatch station. Uh, as call volume continues to grow, and it does, um, we're looking at expanding the, the workforce in our dispatch area. And then along with the Symphony Console, we're looking at adding a new computer, um, console as, as well. And actually, both of these are for two, two new spots in our dispatch station. The next item is our vehicle replacements. Um, there are two vehi- I'm sorry, actually, a total of six vehicles being proposed, eight. Eight vehicles proposed for replacement, two departments. Um, the Commissioner of Revenue has requested, uh, the replacement of a vehicle, and the Sheriff's Office have requested the replacement of seven vehicles. So, we have a total of eight vehicles scheduled for replacement. Uh, we do have a vehicle replacement policy. Um, it is a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles, uh, for county vehicles. Um, it's a hundred thousand miles for sheriff's vehicles, and the thinking, the reasoning behind that is the sheriff's vehicles idle, and they run a lot more, uh, than the normal county vehicles. Um, and I, a big reason for that, and I always get that question, or I've gotten complaints, um, that are seeing sheriff's vehicles idling, um, and they feel that it's a waste. Well, once you power down a vehicle, it takes a little while to power back up the radios and, and, and their equipment onboard, that's why they keep them idling. Um, and then the next line item is computer replacements. Uh, we replace our computers every five years, that's the longest we can get a warranty on our computer, and really, that, that's a pretty long time for computers. Um, so, uh, the computers that are being proposed are the computers that have, will reach their five-year replacement schedule. The next page you have is Public Utilities, and we separate public utilities from our other departments because there's no taxpayer dollars that goes into supporting the ca- these capital projects within the Public Utilities Department. Our Public Utilities Department is solely self-supporting, um, they're funded by the revenues that they receive from utility fees, service fees, connection fees, um, that's what supports the utility system. There are some big projects, um, that are planned. Uh, one is a colony site upgrade, um, the colonies is one of our older, uh, water systems in, 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 in the county. Um, one that we've been doing some small upgrades, too, but, um, that system is in need of a significant upgrade. That is a, a water system only. Um, water system interconnections, New Kent Highway Water Line. Uh, this project involves connecting essentially Bottoms Bridge, the Bottoms Bridge Water System, to the Farms of New Kent Water System. And by doing that, we'll have one big looping water system, um, and actually, it would extend the line basically from Dispatch Road to Airport Road. Uh, well, just before Airport Road, because the new food line, it, it would connect into the new food line. Um, by doing that, we will have one big looping system, uh, from Bottoms Bridge all the way to Brickshire. Um, it would be one water system. This helps on fire flow, it helps on our, uh, maintenance costs, it allows us to discontinue pumps and, um, which are a continuous maintenance item for us. Um, and really allows the system to operate more efficiently. As well as this, you know, eventually, um, we have a permit to withdraw from the Pomont Lake River, um, if we ever pursue that option, or pursue an option for buying water from Henrico or City of Richmond. Um, one of the big things we'll have to do, once we connect that line, is to connect the entire system so that we can serve everybody. So, we're doing that now by connecting our, our water systems, and then when we get to the point where we're ready for another water source, the ring is already there. Also, our Tallisville Pump Station Grinder, um, it's a significant process, project, um, but it's one that is very much needed. Um, you'd be surprised what comes out of those truck stops on one oh six. Uh, and essentially, that, that's what it is. It's a grinder that will pretty much pre-treat and grind the waste before it gets into our sewer system, preventing clogs and things of that nature, which we've, um, have found some in- interesting things, uh, that have clogged up our system. And the next item is the Utility Operations System Center Site Planning. Uh, with the Utility Operations Center Site Planning, uh, we are at capacity at our Public Utilities Office. Uh, we are starting to look at other options, other potential sites, uh, for the construction of a new administration office for the Public Utilities Building. Uh, generator replacements, uh, we have various replacements. Generator replacements, we have various replacements scheduled for our generators. We have a lot of generators at all of our pump stations, our water towers, and they're all on a replacement schedule as well. Water system interconnection Phase Two. This is, actually, this project should be up with the second project from the top. Phase Two is the, this is mainly engineering and design for the $250,000, whereas the second from the top is the actual construction. SCADA system upgrades, again, software replacements for upgrades, Mini Tree Glen Water Supply Well. That well does not have a backup well. I believe now that is the only water system in our water system that does not have a backup well. I believe we've just installed one for the Colonies, or that Sherwood. So therefore, we're proposing one for Mini Tree Glen, too. Perm Landing Wastewater Treatment Plant Fire Alarm Upgrade. An upgrade to our current fire alarm system. That plant is about 11 years old now. And the next item is Mini Tree Wellhouse SCADA System as well. The SCADA system is a software system that monitors our water and wastewater system. So when there's any abnormal flows in our system, or if it's just not flowing, we're alerted of those issues. Any issues with pumps, the SCADA system alerts us with those issues as well. And then there's the vehicle replacement schedule. And I'm sorry, I've noticed as I was going through this, I think I skipped the second page. Yeah, yeah, so if I can go back, that completes our Public Utilities Capital Request, but if I can go back to the General Capital Request. Oh, let's see, I didn't start with page one. That was the problem. Okay. Going back to the first page, we have two airport projects. One is an obstruction removal, which we're required by FAA to keep a clear approach and takeoff area of our runways at the airport. We have identified various trees that need to be removed or cut, topped off. The cost of that, and there's some land that we need to purchase, too. The total cost is $650,000 for that project. With that project, and with most airport projects, a good portion of those projects are funded by the FAA and Virginia Department of Aviation. The normal mix is the FAA will fund 90% of a project, the state will fund 8%, and the county funds 2%. With that $650,000 project, $1,000 project, the cost to the county is $13,000. We are also planning some cracked ceilings in our runway, at our runway. It's a $315,000 total project, cost to the county is $6,300. Moving to our fire and rescue, which is a good portion of the $16 million total project. I have planned for the construction of a fire station next fiscal year. I've placed in here the replacement of Fire Station Two, but that could be swapped with Fire Station Six, a new station at Fire Station Six in Bottoms Bridge. I will ask the board which, what takes priority, but the important thing is we are planning for the construction of a new fire station for next fiscal year. Normally, this is something we would borrow for, but I'm proposing that we cash fund this, as we have the funds from Colonial Downs to cover this expenditure. Yes?
You're saying that Fire Station Number Two could be ultimately replaced, or in lieu of that, be a construction for, of a station in Bottoms Bridge? Is that correct?
Yes. We need to replace Fire Station Two, that won't go away, and we need a station in fire in Bottoms Bridge as well. We've identified both of those as needs. What I'm saying is, we can swap the order if the board so chooses. I'm proposing to move forward with Fire Station Two, but we could do Fire Station Six first. It's just with Fire Station Six, there's a lot of other things that we need to think about and plan for on the operations side of our budget process. Fire Station Two is easy because it's already staffed, we already have equipment there, and we're just moving into a new building. Whereas building a new building, we have to buy new engines, we have to hire new staff. So it's just a little more planning that's involved in that.
Great, perfect. I guess my question is, the way it's kind of written here, and I just want to make sure I understand, is that it's a full replacement for Fire Station Number Two? It's not just try to use what's there? It's a full replacement, less the equipment?
That is correct. It is a full replacement, and we're not even looking at that site. It'll probably be in the vicinity, but we're looking at a totally different property. We also have, well, it was requested in their CIP, 1.5 million for a burn building. I am not recommending funding for that at this time. Reason being is, I think that there may be some state and federal grant opportunities for that, and it is a vision of our fire chief that this be a regional facility and part of the Bridging Communities Current Technical Program, which is six other localities that participate in that program. I would like to pursue a regional option with some grants before we look at fully funding such a project. Fire apparatus, I am recommending that we purchase a new engine to replace one of our older engines in our fleet. In fact, I see Mr. Davis, I think the engine that we're replacing is a very old engine that we bought from James City several years ago. I am requesting the replacement of two ambulances. They get the most service, they get the most mileage per year, they are constantly, constantly in use. $290,000 for support fire EMS apparatus that would consist of a brush truck and a pickup truck to tow some of our other fire equipment as well. $150,000 is being proposed for the development of a preparedness plan that would involve training and exercises as well. We've all seen the school shootings across the country and other mass shootings across the country, which is becoming way too common. This funding would hire a consultant to develop a countywide plan that would include the school facilities as well. Extrication equipment, we're requesting $125,000 for the purchase of that. That's the Jaws of Life, the equipment we use to extract people from vehicles. Structural PPE turnout gear, $125,000 is proposed for that. I believe we have turnout gear that's about 15 years old, and that might be common in fire, but I was a little shocked that we're keeping equipment that long. So it is for the replacement of that.
It should be common, it should not be common.
Okay, good.
I think 10 years is the span of serviceability for those.
So this is something that we really need to address. EMS, emergency support equipment, there's a list in your packet in the details section, totaling $80,000, and we also have $52,000 for fire station access controls. We're trying to put all of our fire stations on the same access control system, which is currently not the case. For general services, you'll see that our director requested $2.3 million for a new refuse and recycling center in the West End. I truly believe it's needed. If you've seen 612 on a daily basis, that site is at capacity, and it's very busy. In fact, you know, with the shortage of drivers, when we miss one pull, our contractor's not able to come and replace our units one time, we have to shut down the entire site until we can get a driver to replace the bins. I am proposing $500,000 as opposed to 2.3, and right now, we do not have a site identified. 500,000 would go towards the purchase of property and hopefully, some preliminary engineering towards finding a site for next fiscal year, and then hopefully, in the following year, we can move forward with the actual construction of a site. The HHS HVAC replacement, that's the Health and Human Services Building, where our Social Services is located. That HVAC system is at its life capacity, and we're proposing to replace that system. We're also proposing pavement, repaving at our Route 618 Trash Transfer Site. I think I presented this to somebody, and they didn't even know pavement was there, because in some areas, it's pretty bad. So we are proposing to repave that facility. We're also proposing to purchase a new 60-horsepower tractor. As our service demand grows, we've taken ownership of some roads in Plum Point that this would help with grading and repairing. We've also taken ownership of a 273-acre property that has a huge open air area, which this would help with cutting as well, and we also maintain other park facilities that this equipment would be useful for, with. And the Extension Building, which is where our Parks and Rec offices are located at also, on the side of the building that's occupied by Extension Services, they have a classroom that is in desperate need of a new HVAC unit, so therefore, $38,000 is proposed to replace the existing unit. Again, the total project cost is $16,524,420. Of that amount, we have in our capital fund, 5.5 million, $751,687 of our normal capital funds going towards this, and we have $10,597,459 of Colonial Downs revenue that will be collected this current fiscal year, going into proposed projects for next fiscal year. And actually, we project that we'll probably have another $2 million of Colonial Downs revenue that will go to our reserves. This time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, I have one question for Mr. Hathaway.
Yes.
Or maybe a remark. I agree wholeheartedly on the reuse of former Sheriff's Department vehicles for carting school-aged children around, even if it's especially, excuse me, SUV. My suggestion is to segue some portion of that 143 towards convincing the state school board, or whoever that may be, education, that that needs to happen. I mean, otherwise, we're wasting money, I believe.
Yeah, no, I totally agree, and that's something we have not let go. Because usually, I mean, we get the full use out of our vehicles, because the schools usually keep them until they're just unusable. So now, we're having vehicles at 100,000 miles, 115,000 miles that we're selling, basically. But we will continue to pursue that. I really think it's a very old rule that doesn't apply today, shouldn't apply today.
Yeah, how many parents are taking their kids to school in a SUV?
Yes, yes.
Is there a sale date that you would have for those vehicles, if we would not be able to use them that way? Does the Sheriff's Department strip them down, and then paint them, and then sell them?
We auction them.
You just auction them?
We do strip them down, though. We do take our computer system, our radios out of it. We do remove all of the, and they're really decals. We remove all the decals, and we auction them.
According to the, our Commissioner of Revenue, they're worth a lot of money. So it would be good to auction them or something, and use that money to buy the new?
Yes, yes. In fact, when we auction vehicles, that goes to our capital fund, so it does go back into the same pot.
Oh, goes to the same pot, okay. The other thing I was wondering, Rodney, is there any, with what we're doing in the capital fund, is there any increase in the operating budget because of these capital projects?
That's a really good point, and I want to bring to your attention, when you look at the detailed sheets of what was submitted by each department, I require department heads to, when they make these ask, they have to list other costs that are associated with that. So in that detailed list, if there are any additional costs associated with that, it will be listed in the booklet, yes. Okay. Thank you.
As there is no unfinished business, we'll move on to the public hearings for this evening. And I will turn it over to Ms. Butler.
Thank you. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we have one public hearing before us. It has been properly advertised for tonight's consideration. I'll take a moment to review the procedures that we will use for the hearing. Each public hearing will be considered separately, but we only have one tonight. Staff will give a brief overview of the hearing that is before us. The sponsor of the case will be given an opportunity to make a presentation. Commissioners will be given an opportunity to ask questions of the sponsors or staff for clarification purposes. I will then open the citizens' comment portion of the public hearing and receive your comments. Sign-up sheets are located in, on the back desk by the front doors of the Administration Building, and I ask the following. You come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, address your comments to the commission, limit your comments to three minutes, and when the timer sounds, please conclude your remarks. Please note that the commission members will not answer your questions during the citizens' comment period, but will certainly take those questions and comments into consideration during the deliberation period of the public hearing. So at this time, I will open the public hearing for Application OA-04-22, Amendments to Section 91 through 94, 91 through 95, and 91 through 96 of the New Kent County Code.
Thank you, ma'am. I was hoping Chief Bennett was going to be here tonight, he's our fire marshal.
He's our Fire Marshal, but I don't think he's going to be able to make it. So, I'll do my best to answer questions, but this is going to look a little bit familiar. We had some similar amendments last summer. And to be honest with you, these were just a couple amendments that we missed last round. So, they have caused a little bit more confusion over the last couple of months that we'd like to try to go ahead and remedy. Like I said, OA dash zero-four twenty-two is to remedy several discrepancies between the subdivision ordinance and the Virginia statewide fire prevention code, which has caused some confusion for developers. It will also help with access and safety in the case of a fire emergency. The fire code requires that all fire apparatus access roads shall have an unobstructed width of not less than twenty feet, where the subdivision ordinance allows a requirement of sixteen feet. The fire code also requires that all streets that terminate in a cul-de-sac have a turnaround having a minimum pavement radius of forty-eight feet, where the subdivision ordinance currently requires forty-five feet. So, we're proposing that we change the subdivision ordinance to comply with the fire prevention code. That's pretty much all I had. I'll try to answer any questions if you have any. But staff recommends approval of the ordinance amendment. Do you have a resolution before you?
Kelly, oh, Kelly, I have one question.
Okay.
The five-oh-three dot two dot two authority, the fire code officials shall have the authority to require or permit modification to the required access widths where they are inadequate for fire, and it goes on. Does that mean if, if it's not there now, they can ask for it to be changed in a subdivision? Or is everything grandfathered in from this day back?
This is, I might have to ask Mr. Davis to chime in on these. This five-oh-three language just comes from the fire code, which I don't enforce in my department. So, I don't know if they have the authority to go back and make people widen their roads. I don't know if they would do that.
Cause, cause the unobstructed is, and he wrote in Patriots Landing, if you've got a car on both sides, there is obstruction that is not, not this width.
And this gets back to a conversation I had with Mark last night.
You know, will there be no parking on one side of the street? I, I know in South Carolina, they enforce that a lot. There is no parking on one side of the street because there is not enough room. So, I'm wondering if this comes back to what's already been done in a subdivision and is asking that if we approve this, they can come and change our roads or make us change our roads.
Go ahead. Yeah, you're the expert.
It's been my experience that that would not be the case, that this is only for, would be for new construction. What's, what exists in the fire prevention code exists today. So, we're changing something in the zoning ordinance, which would be for future, because zoning ordinance not going to go, be retroactive. So, yeah, I'd really, I don't think that would apply for anything that, that does exist.
And I, it's my understanding, I do believe that the Fire Marshal or the Sheriff has the authority to do something about the parking on the road if it's obstructing a fire engine.
There is a possibility that you could designate it as a fire lane.
Right.
And then it's, then it's an enforcement issue to which the Fire Marshal and or the Sheriff's Office would be the enforcement authority.
Right. Yeah, the changes that we're proposing, yes, for construction of new roads.
When we first moved in there, they said we're not supposed to park out on the street.
Right. I know.
Side of the road, park me both ways and down the hill. There's no fire truck to get to there.
I know. It's a problem all throughout the county.
Well, is the potential that, but the, because the way the fire code's written and gives them the authority, if there is a problem, they can enforce some type of corrective action. Is that right?
If it's, if it's designated as a fire lane, then there could be, if it's not designated as a fire lane, then whatever the rules of the road are, whatever, you know, the Sheriff's Office, Office can enforce as far as being, you know, just normal street citation, you know, parking in the wrong direction or, or, you know, parking from a fire hydrant or things like that, but. But it was parking on the shoulder of the road, you know, but it should be in Virginia code that if it's a Virginia code issuer citation, then Sheriff's Office should be able to handle that if it's a violation.
Madam Chair, having been on the engineering side of these type of situations, when this came to my attention, I did all, I did a little research and understand the chief's or the assistant chief's point on having fire access to help fight the fire. In fact, I talked to Mr. Davis earlier this week, and he stayed quite effectively. My job as a firefighter was to get to the site of the fire, and I wholeheartedly want to endorse that. However, I think, in my opinion, that the definitions for a fire apparatus road may have been sketchy at best, and we're using a definition to apply to a modification to our current ordinance that we have. So, I called the State Fire Marshal's office and I spoke to Chief Robert Parker. And I read him the code of five-oh-three point one point, maybe point two point one. And his first words out of his mouth were, that's to be applied from the street to the building site, from the street to the building site. I then read him the definition for fire ac, uh, fire apparatus access, and the definition does include public street. So, I'm in a little bit of a quandary there, because I think the streets are to provide fluid travel of motor vehicles. That includes fire, fire suppression equipment or emergency vehicles or Sheriff's Department or anything that needs to move on that roadway system. But when you widen a roadway or enhance a cul-de-sac in diameter, you're providing opportunities for the public to park on those roadways or in the cul-de-sac in a radial manner. That starts to minimize the effective width of that so-called fire ac, uh, fire access. So, I'm not sure where I am on this. I understand we need a kind of a stopgap measure, but I think it needs a little more thought and investigation. There, I think there's enough wording and terminology in our current, current ordinance that if we should add some discretion of the Fire Department on the widths, if we don't have it, we should add it. But I think we need to make sure that we're not also causing a problem with actually effectively reducing length with, with long-street parking, and we're just back in square one again with fire access. Now, to a housekeeping measure on the same topic. If we look at the chart on, under section ninety-one dash ninety-four geometric standards, it's suggesting a minimum right-of-way width of forty feet for the adjusted value of twenty-foot width. I'm, for the sake of knowing the geometry of roadway construction, I'm going to suggest that that right-of-way width go to fifty feet, because all the elements of a roadway still need to be in, still needs to be in that right-of-way. And since we already have a right-of-way width of twenty feet with a fifty-foot right-of, I mean, twenty-foot wide with a fifty-foot right-of-way, I think we need to make them.
I agree.
Agree with each other. The second two items has to do with wording in our coordinate, in our current ordinance, in which there's reference to the Department of Transportation geometric standards or features. Again, the Department of Transportation is charged with the responsibility of fluid traffic flow. If we go with something that's different from those Department, Department of VDOT, I mean, Department of Transportation standards, then maybe we need to remove those words in accordance with VDOT standards or rephrase it somehow. But I think, to be honest with you, I think it needs a little bit more investigation. Maybe that's occur when we have a, when we get to the zoning ordinance rewrite. Maybe place into something a stopgap measure for, for making sure we have that fire apparatus access road currently of an appropriate width, but I think it definitely needs to be on the agenda for reconsideration. Thank you.
Just as a comment, though, the, what's, what's found in the statewide fire prevention code today is what is existing, so it's always going to be, it's going to be a conflict unless it is addressed. Now, what probably should be addressed is at the state level, the secretariat level, between transportation and Department of Public Safety at state level to, to work out the difference in details, if there are any, between transportation.
When, when Patriots Landing turned their roads over to VDOT, we, we made that assumption that they were correct. And that's the assumption I make for all the roads I drive on, because they're all owned by VDOT. And so, if they're not correct, it's, it should be up to them to fix what's there now. If, and in new construction, I would think if, if they are not going to be, if they're going to be private roads, that's where we come in. If they're going to be public roads, then that's, I would think, VDOT's decision. We go to them all the time, asking them if it's, if VDOT approves a roadways and that, and if they don't, we have a problem with it. And so, I'm, I would think we need, if, if a new construction is going to be done on public roads, it's up to VDOT. If it's private roads, that's, that's where we come in.
And they, VDOT does review, as well as the Fire Marshal's Office, they do review all new road construction plans. And we don't approve them unless they approve them. But I do agree, I mean, we do need to look at this more comprehensively in the future, especially if something else changes in this coming session, so. Yeah, this was just a request to fix some immediate issues that we've been having with the discrepancies with the fire code. But we will look at it more closely in detail.
Where, where did the request actually come from?
Fire Marshal.
From the Fire Marshal, okay.
There was some confusion from a developer who noticed the discrepancy, because the Fire Marshal was asking for a wider pavement width. And he came back and said, well, the subdivision ordinance only requires eighteen feet. You want twenty. Can you make an exception or whatever? So, they had to go out there and take a look and make sure everything was okay. And eventually, they did, but they asked us to change it, so it wouldn't happen again.
And I do think there is room for exception. I mean, you can't make all the rules apply to everything so stringently, especially like on a very short cul-de-sac street that may be three, four-hundred feet in length and only serves five lots. I don't, not, not sure it's necessary to have a twenty-foot wide pavement and a ninety-foot diameter cul-de-sac there, because probably a school bus wouldn't even travel that three-hundred feet to pick up schoolchildren.
Right.
So, the likelihood of, of an engine is probably less than the daily occurrence of a school bus. So, if we do adjust the code or the ordinance, I think it needs to do have specifically allowed some justifiable reasoning for waivers or modifications that can be agreed to by the administrative staff here and the Fire Marshal as well as VDOT.
Right.
The second thing is, I know from past experience that this locality has the ability to identify whatever width of street they want with whatever right-of-way they want. And VDOT will support that so long it is standardized and written documents by the locality. But I don't know if New Kent really wants to go down the purview, you know, down that avenue of having their own Department of Transportation design guidelines, you know? So, I mean, we, we need to somewhat rely on those authorities that we have in place today from the state. But since we're the practitioners of that, we need to be justified in our decisions too.
And the Fire Marshal can, or the Fire official can make modifications to the fire prevention code anyway, regardless, so that is not an uncommon practice, you know, based on whatever the scenario is that's presented to them, so. That can, as long as the spirit and the intent of the code is maintained, then the Fire official can make those changes.
At this time, I will open the citizens' comment portion for the public hearing. All right. We don't have anyone signed up to speak. So, at this time, I will close the public hearing for application OA dash zero-four dash two-two amendments to section ninety-one through ninety-four, ninety-one through ninety-five, and ninety-one through ninety-six of the New Kent County Code. And I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Hearing, hearing a number of different comments and thought, thoughts on, on the matter. Are there, are there any other comments?
So, Madam Chairman, so we are voting on what was suggested, but are we saying we'll vote on this tonight? And then possibly when it comes time to look at this, we would go over it again on, when we rewrite the code?
I think we, we could do, we could do that. The, probably the one, one thing that I, I thought was potentially a good idea would be to put some type of exemption la, language into, into, into the, the document as well. But, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm open to.
Because it seems as if this is a problem, but there are other little, little tweaks that need to be made.
Well, yeah, the, the, the code needs a lot more, a lot more work in, in a number of areas. And those, most of those were going, we determined we'd put off until the rewrite.
Till the rewrite.
I, I think a lot of things we've done in the last year, and Kelly, I think you back me up, is that we've been looking at the mistakes we've made in the past on how we've zoned things and how we've written things, and we're trying to correct those. And we are doing it patchwork-wise, but we have to do it patchwork-wise until we rewrite the code. So, if this is what the Fire Marshal wants, I, I'm thinking that's what the Fire Marshal gets. Just my thought.
Madam Chair, and I guess to reconfirm with staff, based on Mr. Bennett's recommendation, would you, would the fifty-foot right-of-way be acceptable to make that change this time if we do vote in favor of the twenty-foot?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Bennett.
I would like to make a motion, if I may. In order to protect, to address, protect and promote public convenience, necessity, general safety, and welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move the adoption of resolution PC twenty-three dash twenty-two to forward the ordinance amendment zero-eight dash zero-four dash twenty-two to the New Kent County Board Supervisors with a favorable recommendation with these changes. Change of the minimum right-of-way width for access road to forty feet. Actually, excuse me, fifty feet, correction. Thank you. Examine the terminology in the ordinance section ninety-one dash ninety-two for the terms of Department of Transportation to possibly delete them as appropriate, so there's no conflict of meaning. And the third thing for that is that this commission readdress this ordinance and, and others in the near, near term, especially in lieu of the fact we're doing a zoning rewrite. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Did we get all that?
She got it videotaped.
Yeah. May I have a roll call, please?
All right. With the three noted corrections from Mr. Bennett. Mr. Tiller?
I'm staying.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Rooks?
Aye.
We'll move on to the new business Makin family subdivision waiver request. Kelly?
Thank you, ma'am. This is not a public hearing, um, so I will just briefly go over the request and two Mr. Makins are here tonight, um, to also kind of go over their request and to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, tonight you'll consider an exception request from section ninety-one, one-twenty-six, six of the subdivision ordinance to waive the provisions specifying the construction of a new permanent-deeded fifty-foot right-of-way built to public standards for the proposed Makin family subdivision. In 2016, the Board of Supervisors adopted ordinance O dash sixteen dash sixteen, which allows for such exceptions. The proposed family subdivision plat in your packet shows where the fifty-foot right-of-way to serve the five proposed lots would be located. The waiver requested by the family is to allow each lot to have direct access onto Newtown Road. Staff does recommend that if the waiver request is approved, that the future family subdivision plats show a shared driveway for lots three and four, a shared driveway for lot two and the remainder lot, which is currently there, and a single driveway for proposed lot one. And then the rest of the frontage along Newtown Road be designated with a restricted access easement. So that's staff's recommendation, um, for the resolution, and I'll invite either Mr. Makin to address the commission.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Ms. Rose, and the rest of the commission. As stated, uh, and I think you all have this letter or have seen this letter, okay? I just want to reiterate, you know, the reasoning for this and, and some points for this request. First of all, we're not planning to sell anything. We're strictly doing this for, we want to get it done for our heirs. We don't want there to be any issues with, 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 you know, property between the cousins. We want to get this done, you know? And as I say, there's no plans to build or sell. We just want to separate my siblings and myself. And each partial, each partial is at least a hundred and fifty feet wide. And, you know... I guess the, the, the rule or whatever, um, we have to put, they're saying we have to put a fifty-foot right-of-way, like a service road is what I think of it as, like a service road to all the properties. And for different reasons, we, we'd like to, you know, consider not having to do that. And, and again, justification would be like, uh, each partial being equally, um, the width being, uh, closed, you know, at least a hundred and fifty feet each partial. They're, they're, they're narrow at least a hundred and fifty feet, and they're deep. But, you know, we're in the country. We'd, we'd like to have our own, um, driveways, if we may, or something close to it anyhow, as opposed to putting one fifty-foot right-of-way that, that'll service. If they were positioned, if each partial was positioned differently, I, I would agree with that, but since they all have road frontage at least a hundred and fifty feet, that's, that's one of the reasons we're requesting this waiver. And again, I'll mention that there are no plans to build, sell, do anything. We, we mainly want to do this for our heirs. Any questions of me?
One question. Did you say that you were, there were, there were no plans to build on these lots?
Not the current generations, yes. Yes, with, with my siblings and myself, no.
Okay. I was a little confused why you wanted the driveways if nobody was planning on building them.
I think it's required, it, it, the, the, we wanted the driveway as opposed to the fifty-foot right-of-way. Because if we, I, I think we're required to do the fifty-foot right-of-way otherwise, correct?
What you were saying, that you don't plan to build on it now, but your children or grandchildren will in the future.
Yeah, they may.
Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Makin, uh, so with staff's recommendation, is that an acceptable alternative?
It is, I mean...
With the combining of the two parcels coming out at the same entrance and the third?
It, it would be not individual driveways, but it would be, it's better than what it currently is.
Right, it would just vary up as soon as you get to the road, probably. Right.
Oh, one driveway service, two partials.
Right.
Madam Chair, I have a question for the applicant. We were provided a diagram.
Mm-hmm.
Of the subdivision of the, that parcel into five lots. And on it is displayed a proposed fifty-foot private right-of-way. Are you proposing that?
No, that's what the surveyor.
Okay.
Put as an example.
All right. To those, Kelly? Would, un, forgive me for not memorizing family subdivision ordinance, but with, uh, with this type of subdivision, well, let me back up one step. What is the right-of-way width of Newtown Road? Is it, is it, is it less than forty feet, I mean, less than fifty feet? And the second part of that question is, would this subdivision create the need to have additional right-of-way width that declared for a sub-fifty-foot right-of-way, to make it fifty-foot right-of-way?
Yes.
I mean, fif- ten feet.
The current sub, well, I'll back up and answer your first question. I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure it's not fifty-foot right-of-way. It's an older road, um, and it dead-ends not too far to the east of this parcel.
Correct.
Um, as part of the subdivision ordinance, regardless if it's a family subdivision or any other type, the right-of-way deficiency, when the surveyor goes out and notes it on the plat, half of the deficiency will have to be given during the subdivision plat. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So if it's forty foot and it's ten-foot deficient of a fifty-foot right-of-way, the Makins will have to give five foot, half of the deficiency on the plat to dedicate for future improvements to Newtown Road if they ever are needed. And then the subdivision ordinance does require the fifty-foot for any, um, three or more lots, which is why we're here tonight, because they're proposing five.
Yeah.
But they do have the waiver option, and that's what they chose to pursue.
Madam Chairman, a question for you, Kelly. Does the subdivision ordinance about, uh, once it's completed, has a three-year wait before they can sell property?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Still imposed to the family subdivision?
It does, yep. Yep.
I'm gonna ask one more question.
Sure.
Based upon our previous discussion of the adjustment in the, uh, fire access road, would either the, um, with the two lanes to service the two indivi- the two, the two lots, there's five lots, two lanes would service two lots, one lane would service one lot, would the two, the...
The driveways.
...that service the two lots have to meet fire apparatus road standards?
The requirements for driveways are different. I believe the width is twelve feet with an, with the, um, what's the right terminology? All-access weather?
All-weather surface.
Yes. I'm looking at Joe. Yeah, so the, but, you know, since they're sharing a driveway, you'd be looking at twelve feet on one side, twelve feet on the other side. Um, or, you know, depending on where the driveway splits, then that would also have to comply with the fire code. But it's not the same requirement as what we were talking about with the road width. Driveways are a little different.
Okay. Has there been any discussion of, with whatever number of accesses that, that the applicant can agree with, of providing a no-access easement for the remaining of that frontage?
I would ask that you include that in a motion, so we can put, make sure they enforce that on the plat when the plat gets recorded. We could designate, have the surveyor, you know, plot out with the topography where the best point is to put the shared driveway and then make the rest of the frontage of the lots a restricted access easement. We do that all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments, thoughts?
Madam Chair, I have a discussion, maybe the applicant could come back up, and I want to make sure you understand what I'm suggesting to you. My feeling, not the truth, but my feeling, we're at that threshold of the number of lots that we should be abiding by the current ordinances of establishing a roadway network to service those lots that are being created. I think five is that threshold. Uh, three, maybe not, a little more consideration. Are you of the opinion that your subdivision of five lots could reasonably be accessed by three driveways? Where two, each, two lots share one driveway, two lots share another driveway, and one would have its own driveway? Are you in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Second thing, would you, are you in agreement that it's necessary to provide the lands with the subdivision to increase the right-of-way width of Newtown Road?
Uh, repeat that?
Sure. But with the number of lots that are being created here?
Okay.
It's in our code to have deficient right-of-way, the street width, not the, not the hard surface, but the area of the street be widened out to fifty feet. Currently, it's only forty feet. So on that side of the street that these lots are, it would be dedicated with the subdivision of these lots. Uh, land that would be given over to the right-of-way for an additional ten feet, making it thirty-five, oh, excuse me, twenty-five feet from the centerline road towards your lots, and only twenty feet on the other side. So basically, you would be giving up some land for the road.
Ten feet.
Ten feet. What, is it, uh, five feet, excuse me, five feet?
Five feet of the partial.
Yes, correct, along the frontage.
Is this, is this already a family subdivision?
No.
Oh, so it's not? Okay, so...
Yeah, depending on the action that you guys take, and the board takes on the waiver request, is gonna determine what the final version of this looks like. If you approve the waiver and the board approves the waiver, this will be shown with two joint access. And then what they're talking about is, along Newtown Road, this area, this isn't to scale, but you'd be dedicating five feet, which is approximately about that much, along the entire frontage of this major parent parcel to take care of half the deficiency of the right-of-way. Does that make sense?
But, but wouldn't that come in?
That'd be required regardless, actually.
Yeah, because they are not a family subdivision yet.
Right.
So if they apply to be a family subdivision, that's gonna be part of that.
That's, yes.
So that has nothing to do with the driveways, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure that they, you understand, ma'am.
And then the third part of that is the, uh, no-access easement to the...
Right.
Do you understand that part? No access easement. You can have the three driveways, but no, none of the rest of the frontage can be used for access to Newtown Road.
Yeah.
The three driveways would be your only form of access.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett, would you like to make that, that motion?
Sure. And I'm sorry to draw this out, Mr. Makin, but I want to make sure you understand completely where we're going, where, where we need to head with this. We're somewhat, we're somewhat being, honoring your request, but we also are trying to abide by the current ordinances that have been adopted. So, Madam Chair, in order to address, protect, and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution number PC dash twenty-four dash twenty-two to forward the exception request by George Makin on behalf of the Catherine Makin Estate to the Newtown, uh, New Kent County Board of Supervisors with favorable recommendation inclusive, uh, inclusive of a non, no-access easement along the perimeter, along the Newtown roadway frontage, except for where the three driveways could occur. And it'd be limited to three driveways.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. May I have a roll call?
All right, and to add the noted changes, Mr. Tiller?
I'm staying.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
We will move on to, uh, the chairman's report. I know really, really the only thing that we have talked about is the, the schedule for 2023, and especially the, the, the January meeting will be... Excuse me, at, at February, I forget, I forget about...
Twenty.
Oh, okay.
It'll be Tuesdays.
Yeah, so, so, uh, those'll all be, those'll all be Tuesdays. So the, uh, you'll, you'll publish the, the sched- the schedule, uh, for the, for the Janu- to be passed out at the January meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, the, at the January meeting, you'll get all your usual paperwork with the calendar, and you'll have to take action on the bylaws and vote officers in and all that same stuff. But that will be on a Tuesday.
Okay. And, um, I, I know there were a number individuals that were, uh, their, their terms were up at the end, at the end of the year. So, have you received the, eh... The, the reappointments?
Not yet, on paper, but I do know that I believe, oh, Mr. Bennett was reappointed, Dr. Schmidt, okay, Mr. Moyer.
Ms. Townsend.
Okay.
Yeah, everybody.
So then you would have been the only one.
And she.
Ms. Rose, okay.
Yeah.
She was, too?
Yeah.
Congrats, yep. You'll get your paperwork, I'm, I guess Wanda's probably still working on it, that meeting was just last week.
Yeah, no, I, I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to check on that, so, okay. And I really, really don't have anything else. I mean, we're closing out the, the year, this has been a very busy, busy year personally and professionally for me, but, uh, um, I've enjoyed my, my tenure, and I thank everybody for, for all their support. I would like to turn, turn the floor over to Mr. Davis to give a little bit of an update on the, uh, Comp Plan Steering Committee. I know we've got a meeting tomorrow.
Uh, that's correct, Madam Chair, we do have a meeting tomorrow with Steering Committee, uh, one o'clock. Not much to report since the last meeting, uh, other than the, uh, survey did close on December second, I believe. So I'm waiting to hear the same results everyone else is waiting to hear as far as, um, what the feedback is from the surveys. I know, as a general note, we, I think we'd have wished to have more responses, but, um, we did not, so, um, but there will be obviously future surveys. but there will be obviously future surveys, uh, you know, this is the beginning of the process versus the end, so. But again, that, the next meeting, the January meeting, I hope to have a lot to report on, so.
Thank you. Do we have a plan RBA?
I was not at the last meeting. I was in Hawaii.
Oh.
Um, I do know that Mr. Lockwood went in my place and I went to look at the meeting minutes today and they're not posted yet, so I don't have a report.
Thank you. Are there any, anything's, anything a note from any of the commissioners?
Madam Chair, um, to those commissioners that were reappointed, I thank you for your continuing participation in this commission. I do think we have a really good group here, and as we move forward in a comprehensive plan and the zoning rewrite, I think the continuity of thought that's been established by this commission and its continuing membership will move us in the correct direction.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any what else? Hearing, hearing none.
Thank you for your service, Ms. Rose. I do appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
As well as the other chairs and vice chairs, so.
Yes. It's been, it's been, uh, it's been good working with everyone and I, I agree with Mr. Bennett. We've, we've got a, a, a good group here and a lot, a lot of combined experience, so. Kelly, staff report?
Uh, just a brief report, um, for you all. In January, uh, the only for sure action item's going to be the public hearing for the CIP, um, unless something comes up and it changes, but those advertisements will be due in a couple of weeks, so we'll have that. And also an update, um, Liberty Landing, the PUD amendment, or not PUD amendment, the PUD, uh, proposal. They are working on some revisions to some concerns on a staff level. We sent their initial proposal out for staff to review and they're addressing, um, staff's comments. So depending on how that goes, I've gotten some back, um, but some are still waiting. We want to make sure that the staff can give you a, you know, good recommendation based on the information that we have, but we want to wait till we have those addressed before we bring that before you for a public hearing. So maybe not January, but if not, then February.
Kelly, any more conversations with any other, any other solar providers in recent history, like the last two months?
Actually, no. Mr. Hathaway and I had a webinar with a company, but it's been a while, so.
And the second thing, miss, maybe Mr. Hathaway can help on this one too, is, um, director for planning, any, I think I saw a notation in the minutes that there was a closed doors session regarding maybe the appointment of a director. But don't reveal what you can't.
No, no. No, uh, no, no problem at all. Um, and actually I have some very recent news as of today. We have an applicant that has accepted the position of planning director. Her name is Amy Enman. Amy will be joining us on January, January second, which is a holiday. It's her official start date. Uh, but she'll actually be in the office on January third. Uh, she just gave us notice today, uh, that she's accepted the position. We're, we're, we're excited about adding, uh, Amy to our team. Amy has over twenty-five years of experience, um, and a lot of different types of planning experience. She's very strong in transportation planning. She's been a director of the Department of Public Rail and Transit. Uh, but she's also worked in planning in the city of Richmond, um, in transportation, and I believe Roanoke, and one other locality too. So she's coming to us with a lot of experience, so we're, we're excited about her joining our team. Thank you. Yes. Yes.
All right. Well, um, there are no other agenda items, and I know everybody wants to get, get home and start enjoying the holidays. Uh, the next meeting will be Tuesday, January seventeenth. And looking forward to seeing everyone. Hope everyone has a wonderful holiday. Meaning is it Yeah, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.